Thanks for straightening that out, Lane.
It bothers me.
Are we ready, Penny? We are on. Called a meeting to order. Any items from the public? Doesn't approve to be? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Vice President, I move we approve the consubstance of the agenda for Thursday, 25th, 2020.
Have a motion, do we have a second? That's you guys.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Internal budget revisions, we have none. Change in status? We have a new hire recommendation received from Allen Davis, County Administrator for Anthony DeLaGatti, as a deputy legal director with an annual salary of $105,005,000 effective July 1, 2020. Approval of minutes for June 11, 2020, Berkeley County Council meeting, everyone was present. We'll go to the council calendar. Let's see here. We're lit up here in yellow on the 25th. The canvas certification this morning?
Not mentioned here.
All right, well, thank you. That took place at 9:15 this morning. And it looks like we'll be, we'll be back in the office or in the council chambers on the 3rd of July, or 2nd of July, I'm looking at the offices are closed on the 3rd, sorry about that. Moving on to Board, Board and Commission calendar. We have a 5:00 PM library meeting this evening, a 5:00 PM ambulance authority meeting. We have, on the 26th, we have a 9:00 AM WEPM talk radio, councilperson Whitaker will be on there. Excuse me? Oh, it's been canceled. You have a home consortium meeting? Doesn't see that on my calendar, somebody must have forgot that. We won't call anybody out on that. She gets mad.
You're welcome.
She gets mad when you do, huh?
You're welcome.
Okay. That moves us into next week, doesn't look like we have anything on the council calendar for next week. Everybody must be taking vacation or something. Which is a good thing, with everything going on in the, in the world today, an opportunity to take time off and celebrate our independence is a good thing. Okay. That's pretty much it on the calendar. We've got, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move in second.
So moved in second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hess, you're up. How are you this morning?
Good, I'm doing fine.
Good.
I have five exonerations, personal property, office error, we had the correct last week for the reasons that's listed there, and it totals up $815,660.
Make a motion that we accept the five personal property exoneration.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you're in and out, ain't you?
I'm taking one minute.
Thanks. We're not even gonna touch that, thank you. Board of meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President, good to have you. Tim, I had a couple meetings this week, starting with the region I developed in council, which was a Zoom meeting, which, you know, I hate it. I was in the office with Bill, and nothing was meeting, so everybody else was going through, and it was like talking to the wall. Very little interaction when it comes to me. Wonder if they don't keep the point one there. Bill explained the federal economic development plan to offer an additional $200,000 per year for the next two years to assist with COVID recovery, COVID recovery and resiliency strategic planning could be the, says, economic dollar. So they, if the money is, actually shows up, we'll hire one full-time staff person, which is economic resilience. So we approved one with the increase and one without, in case it doesn't show up. Also, so we approved those two budgets, and we also renewed the one-year extension to the on-call consultant contract with Michael Baker International. Then I had a Berkeley County Public Service Water District meeting, which was actually called in the same room by the same time, and they approved alternate maintenance extension agreements for Rocky Ridge, which is next to hospice, pretty big townhouse, A&amp;M Manufacturing, which is garage, whole inch extension, and a warehouse of flowing water that's locked on. Then they resurrected 10-year-old plans to, to a, out there, it's Springfield subdivision, off the corner of that area.
Gold Miller.
Yeah, Gold Miller Road. Do a treatment plant out.
I'm not mistaken, there's a pretty big offshore out there.
Yeah. And there's about two meetings.
Well, I have a couple.
I am, I am. They gave me the gavel briefly.
Two I'm talking to.
As the liaison to landmarks and to the roundhouse, with a heavy heart, I wanted to announce that Kevin Saring passed on, passed on in 19th California. I'll be looking to get some additional information so we can send a card of some type. He was a very connected individual who was a preservationist and architect and personal friends of everybody in Charleston, because he went to school with Susan. So he's a great boss to our organization. My last contact I had with him was June 6th, and said he had ALS and he was spiraling, so he was really gone down quickly. And on to my regular meetings, I got a meeting today scheduled with the contractor at the roundhouse, bathrooms, HD's out of town, so gotta do a walkthrough of some type to see what's going on. Number two, for those that haven't seen it, the massive heavy giddy rains we've had in the last Saturday night and Monday night did major damage to the fruit exchange. This fruit fell in.
Down off of Frank Street or?
Frank Street. At the bottom of the hill, right before you go to the pass.
It was prevention, anyway.
It was intervention, but this was the final blow. The big hazard with that issue is, the buildings had been given, had been sold at tax sale. Individuals that got it couldn't do anything with it, so he then gave it to the roundhouse when Mark was in charge, and there's no access to it. The roads in the property is all owned by CSX. So it's a very conflated situation. And the committee meeting that I had this week with CBP, the visitor center, and we actually held at the visitor center, everybody sitting all the way around, six-foot distancing, and we had, they had group talks about what's going on, and how can the visitor center work with advertisement of what's going, what activities are going on, and everything is so limited right now, they, they don't know what to do, so what they're looking at is, one of the businesses had come to us and was talking about that she was gonna take the project to, to home and do a lot of home projects and have it shipped out to people if they called for, for whatever they needed, because the person was a pottery person. And so there's gonna be a lot of reorganizations of small businesses, because they, in order to make, make it financially, they've gotta be creating. And so this person has been working very diligently, so the farmer's market, which is in town, a couple days a week, we're trying to encourage that, because that brings people out. But again, it's very hard. On the other side, legislatively, I want it's heads up, the Senate Bill 799 was entered
Anthony DeLaGuetti as a deputy legal director with an annual salary of one oh five, uh, one hundred and five thousand effective July one, twenty twenty. Approval of minutes for June eleventh, twenty twenty, Berkeley County Council meeting. Everyone was present. Uh, we'll go to the council calendar. Uh, let's see here. We're, uh, we're lit up here in yellow on the twenty fifth. The canvas certification this morning.
Not mentioned here.
All right. Well, thank you. That took place at nine fifteen this morning. And it looks like we'll be, uh, we'll be back in the office, uh, uh, or in the council chambers on the third of July, or second of July. I'm looking at the, the offices are closed on the third. Sorry about that. Moving on to, uh, board, board and, uh, commission calendar. We have a five P M. library meeting this evening, a five P M. ambulance authority meeting. We have, on the twenty sixth, we have a nine A M. W E P M. talk radio council person. Whitaker will be on there. Excuse me? Oh, it's been canceled. You have a home consortium meeting. Doesn't see that on my calendar. Somebody must have forgot that. We won't call anybody out on that. She gets mad.
You're welcome.
She gets mad when you do, huh?
You're welcome.
Um, that, uh, that moves us into next week. Doesn't look like we have anything on the council calendar for next week. Everybody must be taking vacation or something, which is a good thing with, with everything going on in the, in the world today, an opportunity to take time off and celebrate our independence is a good thing. Okay. That's pretty much it on the, uh, calendar. We've got, uh, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a move in second.
So moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Mr. Hess, you're up. How are you this morning?
Good.
I'm doing fine.
I have, uh, five exonerations, personal property, office error. We had the correct last week for the reasons that's listed there and it totals up eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Eighty-six, sir.
Make a motion that we accept the five personal property exoneration.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you're in and out, ain't you?
Takes me one minute. Thanks.
We're not even gonna touch that. Thank you. Board of meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple of meetings this week, starting with the region I developed in the council, which was a Zoom meeting, which, you know, I hated. I was in the office with Bill and nothing in the meeting, so, uh, everybody else was going through, and it was like talking to the wall. It's like very little interaction when it's coming to me. Wonder if they don't keep the point one there. Uh, Bill explained the federal economic development plan to, uh, offer an additional two hundred thousand dollars per year for the next two years. Uh, to assist with COVID recovery, COVID recovery and resiliency strategic planning, um, could give the, uh, says, I don't know. So they, if the money is actually shows up, we'll hire one full-time staff person, which is economic resilience. So we approved a budget, one with the, uh, increase and one without, in case it doesn't show up. Also, so we approved those two budgets and we also renewed a one-year extension to the on-call consulting contract with Michael Baker International. Then I had a, uh, Berkeley County Public Service Water District meeting, which was actually called in the same room at the same time, and they approved alternate May nine extension agreements for Rocky Ridge, which is next to hospice, a particular town housing, A and M Manufacturing, which is garage, whole inch extension, and a warehouse of flowing water is locked down. Then they, uh, resurrected ten-year-old plans to, uh, do a, uh, bring, it's a, out there, it's Springfield subdivision off the corner of that area.
Uh, Goldmeller.
Yeah, Goldmeller Road. Let's do a treatment plant out.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a pretty big obstacle for out there.
Yeah.
They're looking at.
And there's your, my two meetings.
Well, I have a couple.
Who's sharing the meeting?
I am. I am. Damn. They gave me the gavel briefly.
Two, two I'm talking.
As the liaison to landmarks and to the roundhouse, uh, with a heavy heart, I wanted to announce that Kevin Saring passed on, passed on in nineteen California. I'll be looking to get some additional information so we can send a card of some type. He was a very connected individual who was a preservationist and architect and personal friends of everybody in Charleston because he went to school with Susan. So, uh, he's a great boss to, to our organization. Now, my last contact I had with him was June sixth and said he had ALS and he was spiraling. So he was really gone down quickly. And on to my regular meetings, uh, I got a meeting today scheduled with the contractor at the roundhouse, uh, bathrooms. H D's out of town, so gotta do a walkthrough of some type to see what's going on. Uh, number two, for those that haven't seen it, the massive heavy giddy rains we've had in the last Saturday night and Monday night did a major damage to the fruit exchange. This fruit fell in. So.
Down off of, uh, Spring Street or?
Park Street. At the bottom of the hill, right before you go to the pass.
Right.
Uh.
It was prevention.
It was intervention, but this was the, um, final blow. The big hazard with that issue is the buildings that have been given, had been sold at tax sale. Individuals that got it couldn't do anything with it, so he then gave it to the roundhouse when Mark was in charge, and there's no access to it. The roads in the property is all owned by C S X. So it's a very conflated situation. And, um, the committee meeting that I had this week with C B B, uh, visitor center, and it, we actually held at the visitor center. Everybody sitting all the way around, six foot distancing, and we had, they had group talks about what's going on and, and how can, uh, the visitor center, uh, work with advertisement of what's going, uh, what activities are going on, and everything is so limited right now, they, they don't know what to do. So what they're looking at is, one of the businesses had come to us and was talking about that she was gonna take the project to, to home and do a lot of, uh, home projects and have it stuff shipped out, uh, to people if they called for, for, for whatever, uh, they needed, because the person was a pottery person. And, uh, so there's gonna be a lot of reorganizations of small businesses because they, in order to make, make it financially, they've gotta be creating. And so this person has been working very diligently. So the farmer's market, which, uh, is in town, uh, a couple of days a week, we're trying to encourage that because that brings people out. Uh, but again, it's very hard. On the other side, legislatively, uh, I want, it's heads up, the Senate Bill seven ninety-nine, um, was introduced last year where they want to go to regional tourism directors, but one in each region. They want the money from this one because we're the most, between us and Charleston, we have the most money coming in, so therefore they're very much interested in our area. And what I'm terrified is that they'll take away the hotel motel. Is that, you know, there's gonna be something gonna go with this because they wanna be able to control it in Charleston.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple of years ago, planning a development council, reorganizing all that.
Well.
It was actually Woody Thrasher, a couple, a few years back. Woody Thrasher was trying to regionalize just about everything, and the problem with regionalize everything is that you have a county like us, this county here, that's going to carry the weight of doing all the marketing and advertising and, and work for the other counties. Um, it's, uh, um, I don't know. It's.
Well, on a state level, they're pushing the southern part of the state. I know that that's an area that needs help, but when we have the population we do, and Jefferson County has the population they do, with the incomes that we do have here, we should be able, because we appoint the people that are on C B Bs, we should be able to control our own destiny. And this is, so look out for seven ninety-nine. I'm gonna, I'm getting a printed off. I'll get everybody a copy. Uh, they wanna rework it, but they're hot to try it on this particular one, so we might have to work with the chamber, because I, it would affect the chambers too, because, you know, the chambers work with projects that are coming up and things. So it's not a positive. So the, uh, market will be meeting, uh, one of those Zoom meetings on Monday, uh, with the, the state tourism, people that, we're talking about the organization of C B B directors, not the state, to see what's going on with this. So it very, very much concerns me. But please support our markets and, uh, uh, I believe right now Main Street is gonna be doing some, uh, Zoom, uh, music or some type. I saw that come up, come through, but I haven't gotten the details.
The whole, uh, gardening issues. The three beautiful activities. One of them is.
That's awful. That's big around.
Great. And, uh, definitely beautiful.
So, uh, that's what I have to, to offer at this particular point, but, uh, stay tuned. There's a lot more happening.
So if I remember right, years ago, they did a, um, they did a, um, demonstration or, uh, if you will, study where they, they took, uh, a percentage of students and they had the students, um, all working, all working for the same grade, and they were giving them, basically giving them all the same grade for whatever they turned in and what the, what the end results was that the, in, in the beginning, when everybody was working on independent grades and getting what they, uh, what they deserved by their own.
Efforts.
Achievements or efforts, um, those, those ended up doing less and coming down towards the level of the ones that, that were doing very little, and so you end up with the whole, that whole society was doing less and less all the time.
That's where we're headed, the mediocre society.
And, and that's, you know, that's, that's, uh, in my opinion, that's a, that's a problem. You know, achievement needs to be recognized for those that put effort forward.
See, last year they gave us an award because of creativity with Berkeley, Jefferson, Morgan County ads that we're running and everything else. Well, they just wanna get, but the issue is that it'll probably be in Jefferson County, and we're the only one of the three that doesn't have a national park or, or, like, they have Cape Town and, and they also have the Washington Downtown Park in Morgan County. We don't have any of those things. So whatever our needs are gonna be, if this happens, we're in trouble.
Mr. Whitaker?
I had no official meetings, but, um, a couple of times this past week, I had the privilege to meet with Nick DeLio at the airport discussing a couple items that you know about as far as getting a sign and getting it erected and up to all out by the intersection eleven and know back. So we discussed a couple of things I didn't wait up to go. Pretty good ideas, so.
Yep.
Well, I'm glad Jim's been working on that, because when I was on the Airport Thirty, they were working on putting that sign out there. We still haven't got there.
It's a long time coming, but you know, it's, it's, good things come with those who wait.
Yes, sir.
Unless you're fishing.
Unless you're fishing.
Then it comes to those who bait. Um, yeah, uh, I, I can, I can definitely say that our airport is, uh, moving compared to what it has in the past, moving at Mach one now, and, and we're, we're going to continue to keep that, keep that thruster going, that's for sure. Um, we have a, a real good team out there working, uh, working for the community. Um, I did have, as a matter of fact, I had a special airport meeting this week where we just sat down to approve the budget and we infused the budget. We actually, um, we actually adjusted some numbers on the budget and, uh, um, we took money out of our, uh, out of our account to balance the budget, but, um, it's real clear that what we're doing is investing into what we have to for, uh, for the future, so. Okay. Move right on. Let's see, where are we at here? Um, and we have, uh, let's see, council person letter, okay, we got, uh, um, board and commission vacancies.
Mr. President, I would like to, uh, back to the.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint John Taylor to the Parks and Rec Board and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we, uh, also have a letter of resignation received from Scott Myers for the Civil Service Commission effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, that's not one of our appointments, so.
It's the sheriffs.
We could probably still send out a letter just thanking him for serving. If everybody's okay with that.
Sure.
Um, council person issues. I guess Jim's got, uh, Whit, Mr. Whitaker's got issues today.
Has opposed any other day? I don't think so. It is, uh, going back to the airport, we will have a one-hundredth anniversary of our airport in twenty twenty-three, and it is kind of taking us on a little bit to, uh, to make it a big, big party, uh, wanting to get airshows and major acts into the airport. Costs a lot of money, and my thought is that we do a three-year campaign and ask our, uh, our corporations around here and our business partners that maybe we can come up with, uh, some funds, they can pledge some funds to help us meet a goal, the lofty one for two million dollars. So, um, asking you all, if you'll be agreeable, that we can send a letter out to our corporations and anyone interested in donating. That being said, um, just preliminary conversations have been with Nick, and Nick is very, um, informative or a lot of wealth of information on, on airshows. Ask him if he could be here today, but he had other commitments. Anyway, with that being said, um.
Is there any big form?
This is the beginning of it, and I'm going to reach out to some, some of the community to see if they'd be interested in being part of the committee.
Yeah, I, I can see city, county, neighborhood, one aspect, and private industry is another aspect. Jewish citizen is the third aspect.
Correct. I think Nick's information or what he has been involved in in the past, he can enlighten the committee on that that we need to take in order to get the major acts. I wanna get, uh, letters out to our senators and congressmen, you know, seeking their help to get a major act, whether it be the Thunderbirds or, you know, it may be angels, kind of rare that they would come into a, a Air Force show, but maybe they can do combined airshow like they do down in D C for, uh, Armed Forces Day. Anyway, got a big idea? Get it started, so we got three years to make a birthday party happen.
That sounds like fun.
So if we can get a committee together in the beginning and come up with some verbiage and some letters and get it out to our, uh.
Well, I say, uh, and a council, credit to get full support, whatever we need to do, probably engaging a few of your committee.
We'll work on it. Be antecing a few people that came in conjunction with the airport authority, come up with some ideas and keep going forward.
I think we had a, we had a, I had a conversation with Nick about it, that, uh, you know, something of that magnitude needs a year at least to plan. Um, and, uh, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea. I think it's one of those community, uh, quality of life things that we talk about all the time doing.
I said, I, I, I warned him about that yesterday.
Like I say, we got less than a little under three years to do something. I think it's a doable option for any corporation or any industry that, that would want, because they're looking to pledge money, uh, open their budget, so give them plenty of time, they may be able to, um, pledge enough to, to hit us in a milestone.
You've got an actual.
For the amount of money.
You've got an actual dollar figure. We have Berkeley County coming up for two hundred and fiftieth in twenty-two, and, uh, we, we're gonna need to do something early or from the fact that our West Berkeley County, um, assembly, it's got bicentennial. What I'm suggesting is we change it to founded.
Are you taking over his council person issues with your?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
You got your own little space here.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think we have a, it's, it, it should be.
I think it ought, it could be a, a year, it could be two years of fun.
Two years, make it two-year-long celebration. I like it.
I mean, that's, after we get out past this pandemic, we need some happy.
That's my, uh, my words to you guys, and if you all agreeable, I'll, I'll get a small committee together and get input from a lot of people.
I think it's a good idea. Give me that.
Hold on.
Yeah. All right. Appreciate it. Now it's, Elaine.
That's my turn.
Elaine, you have some council, you have some issues too.
Well, again, earlier, because we're coming up with the two thousand twenty-two, we need to get this changed to, if everybody agrees, to founded seventeen seventy-two. And what I was thinking is that we could get those, what do they call those coins?
Challenge.
Challenge coins, with the new founded seventeen seventy-two on the back, and then on the other side, we worked with the contest with the kids in the schools to come up with the two hundred and fiftieth, they use that as part of it, as to, to come up with the, the back on it. That's why I say we need it sooner than later, because if we're gonna do that, this next school year would be the one, work on that, the, the design. Uh, I've got the D A R list right here, uh, with people that work on the histories. I'm looking at, and this will go right in with what you have, April through November of having different activities. Uh, the parade had, would have to be in May because of the, uh, fact that we have apple harvest in October, and it would have to be the week after the apple blossoms. So we already, there's things that we've got to schedule in because of other activities. And with Reverend, uh, here, the November would be the month for docents and things for church tours, with the stained glass windows and the organs and those types of things. So I'm looking for a full year of activities, and then we can go into the next year with, with what we're working on, the, the airshow, and I think it would be a phenomenal, hey, we're here. Let everybody know.
So do you have, uh, committee members in mind to help you?
I've got, that's why I said, I have the D A R folks, I'm getting ready to, I've already contacted them, I've got their contact points, I'm, I'm getting those, and like you said, I've, I've gotta get industry and everybody else involved, uh, we're working on getting the committee together. But I'm suggesting, if, if it's okay with you, that we look at, uh, Alan, who did this particular one? Do you remember?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, because, I mean, I think we ought to get, that's gotta be, that's step one. That's the reason I'm trying to get that done now, so that we know where we're going in, in, for the, for this, uh, kids program as far as getting them involved, et cetera. And then they could also come up with suggestions for what we do per month, but I think we start with Morgan Morgan in April, and then you have American Ha, uh, excuse me, Martinsburg Heritage and the parade in May. I already know what's in November, and I've got some other ideas for the rest of the month, and I wanna have one, one of the months, we wanna have tours at, like a museum down to Roundhouse with all the Martinsburg artifacts we can drag in, people come see.
We can have bathrooms, by the way.
Oh, we're gonna have bathrooms, because I'm meeting the day of the contractor on some of the punch lists, so one of the, one of it's gonna get done, it's because bathrooms are gonna get done, so, uh, but I'm, I'm thinking it's a big project, but it'd be fun to be a, that'd be a two-year project between our program and their program.
I think it's a good idea. Think, uh, you know, I, I think we have a great opportunity coming up. We have a, an election within a few weeks in the city, and hopefully the city, the new administration that comes in will be more, uh, more enthused about having people downtown and creating activities in the city.
Well, one other item, uh, Mr. Doier, uh, we were supposed to have the one hundred fiftieth, the celebration of firefighters with the city that was licensed, uh, as organization, uh, but we're moving it up to next year, so that could be the kickoff with, uh, vintage fire trucks and all that other stuff would be next August. So I'm looking, trying to step things, that would be the city's contribution to help pay for a band and that kind of thing, too. And, and the other day with C B B, they said our organization, our things are not gonna be the same as what they were. The biggest difference is you're gonna need more space, like with the airport, doing a project, you're gonna have the space. We do braids throughout the space. Everything's gonna be separated, so, if that's what we have to do, because we don't know where this thing's gonna go. That was the big concern.
That take care of you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Everybody on board with?
You guys opposed something?
Good, good. The, um, yeah, it, uh, like I said, it'll be interesting to see what happens after, after the election, how the, how the new administration wants to move things forward in the city. The, uh.
Move or not move.
Yeah. Well, you know, fortunately, um, the, uh, capital of West Virginia decided they were going to have fireworks this year, and then July fourth, um, at ten P M., if you, uh, if you have a half a day to spare, you can drive down to Charleston and, and, uh, spend, uh, spend the day on, uh, Canal Boulevard down there. They're closing the street down so that there's social distancing available, and, uh, at ten o'clock, you get to watch the fireworks.
They be projected over the, the river there.
That's, that's what they say, yeah. They're going to, yeah, they, they're suggesting you watch them from home or, or, um, or the street will be closed, so it's great to see that they figured out a way to make it happen so that we can, at least somewhere in the state, celebrate our independence.
Article in the T V, I mean, but, uh, incidents of complaints due to noises from fire, illegal fireworks. Some places delay five thousand percent. You're calling in nine more.
It's gonna get worse, because everybody's taking and purchasing their own.
When you have a close community, it becomes troublesome.
Yeah.
Well, they said they were shooting all the downtown middle of the city.
Yep, and it's, I'm sure it's going to get worse. I'm sure it's going to get worse as, uh, as we go through the next week or two. Um, but, uh.
I love to celebrate our independence. I'd like to be.
Yeah, yeah, well, and I, I personally always said, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it, but there's a, there should be a limit, you know, people should at least limit it to a, a celebration and not be doing it at two o'clock in the morning. Some people have to work. Okay. Well, we got rid of those. We're moving right down the list. We're about twenty-five minutes ahead of schedule. Do we have anybody expected to join us, uh, this, this morning for the COVID nineteen discussion? Can we give a call to, uh, Bill Kearns somehow and see if he's, uh, planning on attending? If not, we'll just go ahead and, if not, we'll just go ahead and move into. You know, one of the, one of the things that bothers me about all the. You know, one of the, one of the things that bothers me about all this is we talk about, we talk about numbers. We talk about positive cases. They said the, the reports are all that the people dying from COVID is definitely, those numbers are definitely dropping. The people that are affected is definitely going up, but they don't give you how many we're testing. You know, it, it, it's all about numbers and it's, it's, you know, people get in a panic. My wife said, oh, my gosh, there's a thousand, a thousand people in, in eight days in Myrtle Beach that have, that have tested positive. And then I was looking into some of the local posts from down there from people locally, and they said they was actually one of the roads coming in where they were detouring traffic off and making out of state people do testing before they came in. So, I mean, think about that, if you did that on Route nine, there's thirty-eight thousand cars a day drive by, drive down Route nine. If you did that on a main route coming into Myrtle Beach, how many people are you going to test in a day? You know, so is, is a thousand, is a thousand people in eight days, one percent or twenty-five percent? We don't know, you know, that's a, that's a vital part of that information.
Now, this, the governor got very hostile towards the person giving the figures because they said they weren't getting all the figures and so that individual signed. It's all, like you said, it's all about numbers.
It's about numbers, you, you know, and, and our position here is that we have to make decisions for the community. And if we can't get real numbers and have answers to questions, how are we supposed to do a good job in making decisions? You know, you have to guess, you know, we're going to make decisions affecting people's lives by guessing. Shouldn't, should not be happening. Do we have anything else we want to discuss about other than the disappointment of reporting? Okay, how's it affecting the churches? You're here, Remus.
What I'm finding is my church is not in the building yet, except we're very small. We're doing worship in the parking lot at the very big truck. And we're also doing Zoom. It's a lot of figure that makes it fun. I draw over the place, you know. If you get the people that are faith-based, you say, we'll leave it to Jesus, you know, and that type of thing. They just leave it on the face and I think a lot of people get sloppy just like others.
How's it affecting you, Donald?
Uh, actually, what I can tell is we're doing okay because people are sending in. I know they're, but we also don't have the same financial crunch as the congregations, all the churches. Hey, I worry, I worry a lot about that. They could have, well, those. Along Paul, I mean, we're not, we took the stance of making our time and giving back the building. My share, I'd rather be in the parking lot or someplace else than do that. And totally, I have several colleagues, one from within our county, several in Maryland, down with totally.
So when you, when you do go back, are you still going to broadcast your servants, sermons so that individuals that don't feel comfortable?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think the Zoom or one of the other platforms would be standard, well, standard. First of all, we're reaching states.
And it's, it's interesting how, you know, I try to find positive in everything and I think that, I think that's a positive part of the message moving forward is that you're going to be able to have people that for one reason or another can't come or choose not to, or, you know, if maybe they're on vacation, you know, maybe, maybe they're ill and they'll still be able to take part in your, in your sermons moving forward. So I think that's a positive that we can say.
One of the other strange things covered in that fight, I'm a member of a organization called Forests and Blue and we do a, once a year, a conference and really we have people down in Virginia putting it on Zoom. And that is that way we have over a hundred. And we're finding that to be very positive, like people that would not be going to a conference, an symposium, presentation that are willing to dial in and, and take that versus.
Yeah, that's one of, one of my concerns that, that we have and, you know, with, with the boards that I sit on is trying to allow, to continue to allow using the, the Zoom, even though some people have more difficulties than others. But I think it's, I think it's a good way to get, even when you talk about volunteerism, you know, volunteerism is something that's falling off in the community and to be able to allow meetings to be held, at least with the Zoom active so that you can have people that might not be able to normally attend, still be part of the decision-making process and, and add to, add to that conversation.
Politics and discussion of one hundredth anniversary. Using available technology that put Zoom, which helps people that would not be able to go to a, a historical symposium. It'd really be a bit, but a lot more people. So they're showing some opportunities, it's also a draw, but I like the in-person stuff.
But you're, you're of the aging population and you've done that for a very long time and it's hard to, it's hard to break old habits and, and evolve into something different. I know the, the, the younger people I talk to, they're like, they just love dealing with meetings like that. And me personally, I like to, I like to be in person and, and have conversations. But, yeah, I've been doing some live things on, on Facebook as well and it's amazing how many people you reach. You know, I couldn't reach that many people in a day, so.
Our church, we're only, we're right up the street from them and we're inside, but every, it's every other queue, there's, there's tape marking them off, you can't get in. So you're, you're, you've got all the social, you've got basically a six-foot circle around you. So that, you know, even though we've got lots of seats, normally like six hundred, but you end up with about fifty people, time you get it all worked out with the amount of space you need. And like you said about Zoom, the first week we, we were inside, they were, I don't know, it was Facebook, whatever, they had over three hundred tuning in, they had the number on it. So, like you said, you're getting, you're touching, you're getting a lot of folks that you might not, and, and the other thing about the new system is when the people come in, you have to have a mask on, you have to register your name and phone number and, of course, you, they've got plenty of the wipes, the antibacterial stuff and that kind of thing, so that if it does break out, you have peoples in the building. So even if I, because I was in there the other day doing some research on some things in, in the historical area and I had to sign in that I was in the building. I probably might be willing to in the building, but there's a lot more restrictions, but they, they're very important about being able to trace who's in the neighborhood.
Okay, well, good stuff. Glad to see everything's working out and, you know, looking at the, looking at the positives or anything. Do we have anything else, Alan? Anybody else? You good? Items from the public? Don't think we have any of those. Okay, we are recessed.
So we know what slows, who slows the movement down.
We knew that already. You see that, you see that one that's being circulated where somebody, a, a young guy was noodling, reached under there, it was a snapping turtle, took the finger, took the finger clean off.
That's smart.
It was trying to, I ever did was I was down home Florida when I was growing up and found a snappy turtle and I threw it in the community swimming pool, cleared that pool out fast.
Yeah. Yeah.